Nathan, can you hear me? Okay, thank you.
Greetings, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay. Okay. I see we have six out of seven. I know one of our members is running a little bit late, but I am going to call to order this meeting on the planning board for January eighth and make a note that this meeting is being recorded. And to start, I'd like to see if anyone would like to make public comment.
If I could, Mr. Chair.
Tom Reedy, sure, go ahead.
Thanks a lot. Tom Reedy, I'm an attorney with Bacon Wilson down in Amherst, and I had sent an email just earlier today to you, Mr. Chair, and I had included a link for four preliminary subdivision plans. And these are for WD calls and some of their parcels for their parcels. The purpose of which, you know, this filing is really just to freeze the existing zoning under forty-eight section six. And so I know that, you know, what we typically do is we submit to the town clerk and to the planning department. And we provide notice of that to the town clerk and notice of that to the Board of Health. But the last time we did that, we received a letter and said, you've got to submit it to us at a duly noticed public meeting. And so that's what I'm here to do, even though it's virtual. I don't know. Besides me showing up to Town Hall tomorrow, which I was intending to do to actually deliver the hard copies. I didn't know if the board had anything else that they wanted me to do this evening to deliver those plans. So that's really why I'm here. Take whatever suggestions the board has. Otherwise, I'll just, I'll hand deliver them to Carrie tomorrow and then provide notice of that, plus a copy to the town clerk and the Board of Health and you know, it'll just start that process of review of the preliminary plans.
Well, thank you, Mr. Reedy. Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, how it would be delivered on a virtual meeting. So I yeah, I would suggest, yeah, just reviewing the requirements of the subdivision, you know, relevant portions of general law that pertain to submission of subdivision plans.
Yeah, and we're comfortable forty-one eighty-one S and what that requires for a submission of a preliminary plan. I think what had been cited in the letter we received last time was forty-one eighty-one O, which deals with definitive subdivision plans, but I'm just, we're just looking to make sure that we get it to you the way you'd like it to be received. And so if that's just as simple as, you know, we'll go through the process tomorrow and file it. And after this conversation, I'm more than fine with that. I'm not trying to, you know, play hardball at all. I'm just, I want to make sure that we're having this conversation and I'm doing what it is that you'd want me to do. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Michael?
Yeah, I was just gonna. It's I don't think, I mean, I'm not the lawyer in this, but I think section eighty-one O is not limited to the final plan, so I would just double check that.
Then how do you suggest, which is fine, right? But I'm trying to submit at a hearing, rather a meeting, and obviously it's virtual. I know the alternative is to submit it with return receipt, but the date that you quote unquote receive it is the date that it's been submitted, which always to me seems interesting. If there's a, if you tell me, listen, we come by the office every, whatever it is, and I can be assured that when we mail it, you know, that's a fine way to do it under eighty-one O because it will be received. I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure that it gets to you guys. You know, that's really what I'm looking at there.
Nathan, can I? I think since we are a small town and you're here. If you use the other delivery methods that are identified statute, Nathan can make a point of going to Town Hall and checking the planning board box with some kind of frequency in the next, you know, days to week. I don't, I don't think that's unreasonable. Nathan, I'm committing you to something like that, but that does not seem like reasonable, does it?
Oh, yeah, I mean, the registered mail, I believe, is covered by statute. And, yeah. So I think registered mail is a good a solid avenue for submission of that. Yeah, well, thank you very much for your time, Tom, and very good.
Thank you. No, I appreciate it.
Carrie?
Yeah, typically I'm in the office Tuesdays, Thursdays, and one of my regular routine things is to check the planning board mailbox. So is that something that I should be looking for and informing you that's been received? Or should I? I'm not exactly sure.
Carrie, if you do that, you can just give Nathan a heads up, then he can come and get it so that he's the one receiving it?
Okay, yeah, I just, he just threw me off when you were saying that Nathan would be the one receiving it, but usually I check the mail, so I just wanted to make sure I know what I'm supposed to be doing.
Also, Carrie, if the planning board were to receive you know, return, you know, registered mail, you would be able to sign for it and say, you know, it's been received?
So typically if it's sent to the P O L box, Grace usually picks up the mail and she'll sign anything that is return receipt. So I wouldn't be the one signing it, but she would be dropping it off in the mailbox and I would then take it. And if it's a file that I can scan, then I would scan it and send it to you, or just a general email that this has been received in the mail.
Right, so, okay.
And just to clarify, statute doesn't say return receipt, it just says registered, so it's a comfort level on the applicant's part.
Thank you. Anything else on this, Tom?
No, I'm good, but I saw Carlos had his hand up. I didn't know if it pertains to this, and so I'll stick around until.
Okay, very, no, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that you were okay before I moved on to the, to talk to Carlos and see what he wants to say.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Carlos?
Yes, hi. My name is Carlos Fontes. I'm at three fifty-nine Montague Road. And just a point of clarification. This type of process, does it need to be given also in a public meeting to the planning board? Does it need to go to Town Hall in a registered, in a registered letter and also be given in a public meeting? Or it's either or, or does it have to be both? I'm not quite clear about what the process is.
So
It's an or.
Yeah.
It's either or.
Right, so a plan shall be submitted under this section when delivered at a meeting of the board or when sent by registered mail to the planning board.
Okay, thank you very much.
Perfect, well, thank, yeah, no, I appreciate it. I know it's, I know there's a lot going on. Polls, Pure Sky, the town, but I appreciate your kindness to me and your hospitality to me this evening, and we'll, we'll take care of getting it to the Town Hall through the registered mail. And obviously any questions, you know, I copied Town Council on the email that I had sent today. I've got a good relationship with them, so, you know, I'm an open book, happy to have a discussion if they want to, so. But that's that. I do really appreciate your time.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Is there anyone here that has a landowner and education and guidance question? I don't I don't see anyone. So at this time, I think we will move on to the Jewish Community of Amherst or J C A Cemetery Inquiry. In December, by way of land use clerk, we received an inquiry from Karen Rhodes, the executive director of the Jewish Community of Amherst. As to whether the setbacks in our zoning bylaw would be applicable to the cemetery. And I received this information and I've had conversations with, I had a conversation with Karen and with several other people in town trying to kind of just gather information. So, you know, the obvious question is about the zoning setback and its applicability. The background is that they are doing a new or at least an updated plot plan. The initial area where they've been burying people in the cemetery is filled up and they're just trying to figure out where they're able to put graves and map everything out so they know what they have and are good with that. And this question came up during that process of them, you know, having a professional perform, you know, various parts of that project. And when I saw this, you know, I kind of asked the question, you know, does this you know, does this mean anything else for us? Under the zoning bylaw, the planning board is designated as the special permit granting authority for cemeteries. And then there's, you know, the state statute, which is is chapter one fourteen, section thirty-four, talks about new cemeteries or extensions and approval of the Board of Health, so on and so forth. So my question was, well, you know, what was initially approved? However, I haven't been able to find anything specific that would lead me to believe anything other than that the entire parcel was approved for uses of cemetery. And that there are any, you know, conditions or limitations on that use that were issued at the time. There may be documentation out there we're not aware of, but the so far we've not been able to find that. What we do have is a a letter from an engineer to the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Quality Engineering that says that the site is a good one for a cemetery. So from what I'm seeing, you know, I don't think there's anything that would indicate to us that this is an expansion or anything that would be covered under the general law, chapter one fourteen, section thirty-four. And that will kind of circle us back around to the initial inquiry, which is about zoning setbacks. One other thing I haven't been able to get you out is, you know, what the zoning bylaw was in nineteen seventy-nine when the cemetery was first approved at Town Meeting. So that's something that we can get and look at. But we can also kind of take a peek at, you know, what we have today. But we can also kind of take a peek at, you know, what we have today. And uh, you know, when you look at the current zoning bylaw, it specifies seventy five foot setback from the front lot line and twenty five feet from the side lots and and rear. And then when you look at what the definition of a setback is, is a an area of a lot extending inward in the lot line uh for the distance specified in this bylaw, in which no building or structures other than fences, mailboxes, and permanent signs may be placed. And there's a little bit more detail about Lake Weola District. Additionally, when you look at the definition of structure in the bylaw, it says a static construction of building materials affixed to the ground, including but not limited to a building, dam, display stands, gasoline pump, installed mobile home or trailer, reviewing stand, shed, sign, swimming pool, tennis court, storage bin, or wall. Now, uh so I don't know if uh we would come to the conclusion that a grave marker is a uh would be considered a structure. I did, was able to have a brief conversation with uh town council on this and uh Donna didn't really think that you would want to refer to a grave as a structure. Uh, we didn't get into, you know, tombs or mausoleums or anything like that, but so that's a you know, there there is a question of what the bylaw was in effect in nineteen seventy nine. But uh, other than that, um, I see Michael has his hand up.
Are you, are you done?
Um, yeah, yeah, I'm I'm, I'd like to hear if anyone has thoughts on this.
Yeah, I was just gonna synthesize it uh as I'm hearing it, which is if they're trying to get clarity about setbacks based on what you just said, it all hinges on whether like you just said, a grave is a structure or not. If it's a structure, then it would comply with the setbacks of seventy five, twenty five, twenty five, twenty five, and if it's not a structure, then if there's nothing in our bylaws, which sounds like there's not, then the normal setbacks don't necessarily apply. Is that sort of? And then that would, based on that decision, that would be the guidance that we would give the J C A.
Right, uh, but furthermore, uh, you know, more likely than not, I I think I think that the current bylaw would not be applicable um as their uh you know, they had the approved uses of cemetery prior to the enactment of our current bylaw. So really, you know, we would want to probably try and get our hands on the uh bylon effect of the time and uh you know, I I haven't been able to locate that and through the town, uh, but I know that I'll be able to, after talking to the to- uh town council, I could, we can reach out to the Attorney General, uh Municipal Law Office, and uh they have all that stuff archived. Uh, I'd like everyone to, you know, kind of continue thinking about it. I did send an email that has some documents in that, you know, if anyone has any questions or uh you know, thoughts about this, uh, I would certainly like to hear it. Um, Diane Jacoby, I see you have your hand up. Would you like to address this? Diane, you're muted. I don't know if you're trying to say anything. Okay. Does anyone have any? Uh, does anyone think that uh a grave marker or a tombstone uh might maybe should be considered a structure under under the current bylaw we have, based on the definition that we're using? An another you know, thing I I've been thinking about, and I haven't, I haven't had a chance to talk to anyone on the Cemetery Commission about this specifically, which is, you know, I think if you drive up the road, you know, probably about, you know, around five hundred yards, you get to the uh town cemetery, and there's a lot of uh graves that are certainly within seventy five feet of the road. Uh, of course, that's uh goes back to those are probably in existence uh long before the uh uh this cemetery was approved, but anyway, um. No one has anything on this, huh?
Sure.
Uh, well, I'm gonna let Robert.
Um. I I just wanted to check the, what was correspondence with regard to green burial? Does the planning board uh, is the planning board uh involved at all in uh giving guidelines with regard to green burial? Uh, I'm assuming uh if there was a green burial twenty five feet from a sideline, uh, that wouldn't be acceptable based upon the correspondence, but is is this our Bailey work or is this just the Board of Health?
Well, I uh it's a good question, Robert. Um, the Board of Health has uh issued a decision about um about green burials, which I believe I included in the email to the board. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay, so the um what they said in this case was, you know, they want to keep that um you know, any uh green burials uh at least one hundred feet from a uh private uh drinking well. And if, uh, you know, until which time a survey is performed, so you know exactly where that well is and where one hundred feet from it is, then uh you also would need to uh keep it a hundred feet from the property line. And they uh make a statement about what should constitute what the property line is as well in that document. Um. Now, if uh there was a new cemetery and the planning board would be involved as a special permit granting authority, in that case, uh, we may have something to say about green burials. Um, in this case, I don't know that we do because I don't think that uh anything they're doing falls outside of what has already been approved. Um, based on the information that I have. So now I see uh I'm uh, Mary, uh, Lou Conca, you have your hand up. Would you like to say something?
Hi, yes, I'm not sure if I missed public comment, um, but my question is uh in regard to a burial ground. I I don't know if I'm out of whack by asking right now or not.
Right now, uh, I mean, public comment is passed, but we are on the agenda item of the um the cemetery, so if you're, if your comment isn't in regard to the Jewish cemetery on Levert Road, then please speak.
All right, it isn't, but it's about a burial ground on Pratt Corner Road. But when can I ask that question of you all and be able to get a answer? It's about the weed lock track that was put over a Native American burial ground?
Yeah, you would have to make it in time for public comment, Mary. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Um, Michael?
So I was gonna answer your question, just to give you some feedback, um, whether, no, a grave was a structure or not. In my mind, I think go either way. Clearly, it's not a, you know, if it's not above ground, uh, it's it's, one could say it's not a structure, but then I think in the list you said that swimming pools are structured, so in some regard, uh, you know, the quality of that underground thing is very different, but I guess listening to Donna's feedback would say that uh she would say it's not a structure. Uh, I guess I would lean in Donna's interpretation, but it's, it's, it's it's clearly, I think it could go either way, so it sort of Donna's thumb on the scale, it sort of leads me to saying it's not a structure. That's helpful feedback. And the other thing I was just gonna add is I, this afternoon I went up to pictures, so um I shared that on an email with everybody, so it doesn't get to the heart of the question, but if people are trying to get a feel for like what it looks like, there's a whole bunch of questions that will show the, from the front and from the side and stuff, just to get a sense of what it looks like if it's not in your, in your brain.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. Uh, Diane, are you um, you have your hand up again? Now you're muted. Okay, there we go.
I figured it out. We have a technical victory here. Diane Jacoby, two thirty, Levert Road. Did the J C A show a plan showing the Butters Wells?
They, they have a document that I, let's see.
This came up at a Board of Health meeting back in August and September.
Yeah.
That there's a requirement of a setback for a hundred feet from a well to a grave. But nobody knew where all the wells were.
Yeah.
The image that you shared with us doesn't have any anything on butter property, so that doesn't help.
Yeah, um. There, there was, they did, there was another uh I sent the most recent map they had. Uh, they did have another plan. Okay, yeah, so yeah, and the, and the most recent plan, it's a little bit hard to see, uh, but uh the plan I did send the board um does have a uh some circular uh lines on them that do indicate setback from private drinking wells, and there's one on the uh what looks like the eastern side of the property. There's one on the uh north, northern, northeastern side of the property, presumably from across the street. And then there's one on the uh on the western side of the property uh that does go into that area where there are already graves. Uh, I believe that ruling was specific to um green burials, not necessarily conventional uh graves.
So they, they have shown the wells?
Well, they don't, they don't show the wells per se, but what they, what they show is a hundred foot setback, presumably. I'm gonna double.
When I was at the meeting last summer, um, we measured distances and and our well is ninety feet from the closest grave.
Yeah.
So I don't want them to get any closer if there's a requirement of a hundred feet.
Yeah, that's a
That's a concern.
Understood, yeah. Um, and that's, that kind of matches with uh you know, looking at the, at this diagram, um, I think what I have is, is kind of like a a work in progress with what they're working on, and they're trying to uh, you know, figure out the answer to this question about zoning setbacks. So, but uh it doesn't show where the well is on the adjacent lots. It it's um in the legend, uh, there, there's a, you know, dotted red line, it says a butter well, one hundred foot zones per survey.
So they, they drew a hundred foot circle without showing the center of the circle where the well is?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, it just shows, it just shows the portion of the circle that's actually on the parcel itself. Yeah. Yeah, um, and you know, this is a document that I received, you know, that was shared with us from the Board of Health, so I don't know what the status of it is. This is, it's uh it it's called like Progress Print, uh, J C A Cemetery twenty twenty three, so I mean, I think it must be the, like, the most recent kind of iteration of what they've been working on. And there's, you know, it does reference uh uh land, uh, you know, survey data. Um, so that's a yeah, that's what we have. Uh, Keith, I saw your, um, well, actually, um, excuse me, um, I I I'm gonna get to you, Keith. I just, uh, before I do, uh, Diane, do you have any other, uh?
You know, that, that's all I had. Thank you.
Yes, um, you know, and as of now, it's uh, you know, the Board of Health, I understand, has you know, been involved in the questions around green burials and um so far the planning board, you know, has just an inquiry about zoning setbacks and uh you know, is not really further involved in that, you know, we're looking at, you know, the questions here, but uh other than that, you know, we don't have any kind of uh you know, it's not the same kind of involvement as if it were a new cemetery, we would be involved as a special permit granting authority, but that's not what this is. Just to kind of give that clarification there. Um, Keith?
Yeah, a couple of things, um. The, the, I think the white, one of the documents you sent was a Board of Health where they had researched the uh potential for groundwater contamination from, from cemeteries and uh the one uh citation they had said that there, there was a dearth of information on it, surprisingly, but that you know, throughout human history, people have been burying people, and there aren't really any documented cases of well contamination from, from human graves. But then the second thing was that, that hundred foot, the hundred foot buffer as it stands to existing wells doesn't take into account if somebody has to put a new well in, if for some reason their well uh stops producing or malfunctions or for whatever reason. Does it go backwards where the homeowner then could not install a well on a part of their property because it now falls within the hundred foot distance to a grave?
Well, that's a, that's a good concern. Um, that's a, that's a good question. My thinking on that would be if uh you know, the homeowner needed to relocate their well and the maybe just to, based, based on ease of access to the property for a purpose of drilling a new well, you know, it puts them closer to the cemetery, right? So I think, you know, the first question would be, okay, well, you know, is there any contamination in the water whatsoever? And then, you know, they might be able to make a decision based on that, and if they were to do that, then they're, they may need to you know, contact the Board of Health, and I mean, you know, Port of Health would be involved in permitting it to begin with, right? A new well?
I mean, I guess this is all out of our hand. This isn't a planning board issue, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's not a planning board issue. It really isn't. Um, so you know, a new well is gonna be with the Board of Health, and and it may be within the Board of Health's uh rights to, you know, say, okay, you know, we've got a new well and notify the cemetery of that. But that, I mean, you know, it's a very good consideration, and you know, I I will uh share that with uh the Board of Health for their uh thinking, you know, I don't know if the ruling that they made is specific to this cemetery or if it's a applicable to everything, so, um, Michael?
Yeah, I mean, clear, it's not even clear what we have to decide necessarily, but I think, or when we would decide, but just uh, what strikes me is if we go with Donna's comment that a grave is not a structure and therefore setbacks don't apply, the, I think the only question for us is what kind of setback would we either require or recommend? I'm not even sure if it's a requirement since it's not in the zoning bylaws, but it seems like that's the two-part question. Like, if it's not seventy five, twenty five, twenty five, twenty five, what would we say it would be? And is, and then is it a requirement or a recommendation? Because it's, there is no guidance, right? That's, that for when we get to that point of decision, that's what we're trying to decide.
Well, I mean, I think I mean, you know, I've been looking at our current bylaw and trying to answer the question of how it applies, because that's kind of the way the question was framed, you know, it's like, hey, you know, the bylaw has seventy five feet. Does that apply? Does that apply? And. You know, answering it in that way, you said, all right, well, you know. Look at the bylaw. What's a setback? What's a structure? Is a grave a structure? And that's kind of the direction, but then, you know, taking a step back and saying, all right, well, the bylaw was enacted in two thousand eight. What was in effect at the time that the? Use was permitted. And uh, you know, and then maybe some more, you know, kind of technical legal questions, you know, like talking to Donna about it. She seemed to think that. You know, it would probably be what was in effect at the time the use was permitted, that would be applicable. And, you know, it's a. So without seeing that, you know, we can't really. You know, discuss further, uh, you know, I would like to. Try and figure out, you know, what is there, if anything. I I would be very surprised if whatever we had in effect in nineteen seventy nine had a a section on cemeteries with. A bunch of detailed uh requirements. I would be surprised to see that, but you never know. Um, Deacon?
Um, I was just gonna ask a question. I mean, if Donna thinks that a a grave. A grave marker is not a a structure. Does that not mean that uh? Graves are allowed right up to the bound?
It 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 that's uh, that would be. What I would gather from that, uh, although, you know, that was. Kind of looking at it from a current bylaw perspective, uh. You know, without knowing what the bylaw, you know, she did seem to think that it was most likely true that the uh. Bylaw from those in effect at the time would probably. Um, be what they were uh. Kind of dictate what their. Restrictions were, if any.
Yeah, yeah. But that would require a particular. A particular restriction for for graves.
Or 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 perhaps a more uh. You know, if there if there was a different definition of structure in that bylaw that included graves maybe, but uh, you know, again, um. You're probably right, Deacon, that it's it's it's, you know, we're probably not gonna find anything that's. Substantially different or more restrictive than the bylaw we have now. You know, we'll see when, you know, I'm gonna probably try and get my hands on it, uh. But uh, so, you know, based, you know. Until we get that, you know, I I don't think we can. Get a full answer, but right now it's, yeah, you're you're right. We're kind of going like, yeah, you know, we don't really have much to say here except uh. You know, follow the guidelines given to you by the Board of Health.
Um, which were which were only for for green burials.
Yeah. At least that's what we looked at. I mean, they may have stipulations for other burials, but.
That's all I got.
Okay, yeah, um. All right, so I I guess, you know, we'll leave it. I'll I'll get my hands on that, uh. See if I can get the bylaw from nineteen seventy nine. I will uh. Relay Keith's question about uh. What would happen if the? Landowner needed to. If in a butter. Has a new well that it's uh within a hundred feet of the lot line. And and anyone have anything else on this?
Um, could I add some? Um, I I do not speak with authority or intimate knowledge, but as a as a rule. Um, I'm speaking to Diane now. Um, if I was in a butter that was, you know, close to, uh, if I my well was close to a cemetery, I'd be. Be most concerned about embalming fluids. Uh, more than the um. More than the decay of a hu- a human decay. And again, I speak with no authority, no intimate knowledge, but. I I speak as a member of the J C A though. Um, and um, my understanding is that um. It's customary not to use embalming fluids. Um, in a Jewish burial that people.
That is correct.
Okay.
And yeah, I'm I'm very happy that that is the custom.
Yeah, so I I cannot guarantee that every every burial is like that, but that's my understanding and that's. The um, my understanding, again, without authority, without knowledge, um. Is that? The um, the intention of people that are buried there is to refrigerate the body and then to bury as soon as possible without. Embalming fluids, so I only bring that up as possibly a way of um. Uh alleviating a little bit of your concern about intaking the embalming fluids into your well, um. And I can't guarantee that that isn't the case, but usually. People are not buried with embalming fluid.
No, I I am aware that embalming fluids are not used.
Okay, great.
He Keith gave me a new idea to be concerned about is if I need a future well, but.
Yeah, you know, um.
Thank you. I'm glad that you know that Diane, and that's all I need to say.
Yeah, no, I I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
Yeah, well, I I think, you know, the other thing is that uh, in our long history of uh. Burying people in the ground, there hasn't been a lot of uh instances of uh. You know, issues arising, public health issues arising from that by way of drinking water, so that's also. Somewhat of a comfort, I would imagine, but uh.
The the J C A has been a wonderful neighbor.
Yes, I'm glad to hear that.
Yep.
And, you know, I mean, we're uh. You know, we 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 just want to answer the question uh the best we can in the most accurate way, you know, without uh. You know, relinquishing any responsibility we have to, you know, a butters or, you know, unnecessarily impinging on, you know, the J C A activities with their. Cemetery. So, you know, we just want to do the right thing here. So, you know, we'll have a little bit of follow up on this, uh, hopefully not too much. Let's see what we have next on the agenda. And we have a planning board annual report. Uh, I apologize, I got this out uh late. But um. I did receive a few uh minor edits from Michael. Um, has anyone else uh had a chance to to read it or look at it?
I read it and liked.
I'm sorry. Uh, go ahead, Deacon.
Oh, no, I I read it. I I thought it. I thought it seemed good.
Excellent, thank you.
Likewise.
Thank you.
I I I'm looking at two documents. I'm not sure if they're the same one, the draft on the lighting zone and also. Um, the special permit and site plans. Are we talking about those two documents?
No, I'm talking about the annual report, the planning board annual report for uh. Uh, for the town town report.
Sorry, I haven't read that.
Oh, that's all right.
Nathan, I thought it was fantastic. It was really comprehensive.
Well, thank you. I uh. I almost had a nervous breakdown because I spent. A lot of time on it, um. Before the last meeting we had, but I I just didn't quite get through everything. Right? You know, I got to. Like the April eighth meeting is where I left off and it's like, you know, the meet the. The fiscal year ends at at the end of June. So, you know, April, May, June, you know, I was like, I was like three quarters, you know, all all the way through. And then uh. Yeah, I'm pretty good about saving things, but now my computer every now and again, it'll have some kind of an update and then it shuts everything down and. Uh, you know, I think I I said, oh, I've saved everything I need. I don't need any of these auto recovery files. And then I go to look at it and. Now I've got, you know, there was just nothing in the document, you know, it was like a skeleton still. I was like, what happened? You know, like, where did everything go? And I found it in the trash and the recycling bin on my computer and. Was able to recover it, but. Anyway, um. So I think uh. Yeah, um. You know, Michael had two corrections. He was uh. I sp- I put an E on the end of leveret. And then uh. Hmm, Michael, the other?
The other one was you created a heading that said complaints from W D Coles, but. It actually was an incorrect heading because it was. Above something that continued to talk about the bylaw, so I think if you just deleted that, because the paragraph prior was about the bylaw. And the paragraph. Subsequent was about the bylaws, just deleting that. Reference would make it accurate.
Well, the the other, so the. I have a complaint from W D Coles. The planning board sent a letter to the Attorney General in April to advocate on behalf of the solar bylaw. Uh, passed a special town meeting. So that was kind of like, I mean, I, you know, it's about the bylaw, but it was also somewhat kind of. You know, we want to uh.
Well, if it was about the complaint, we would have sent it to the court.
No, I understood. I mean, it was kind of like, it was. You know, there was something, uh, you know, in the minutes, it was kind of like, you know, uh. Ho- it was kind of hoping to get. You know, confirmation from the Attorney General that, you know, the. Bylaw that we passed that was being challenged was going to be approved. You know, hopefully. I think was the avenue there, but then the other part is uh mentioning, you know, going to the executive session about. Strategy with respect to litigation. Which, I mean, you know, it's a. But, you know, um, I mean, that doesn't necessarily need to be in there either. You see what I mean?
Yeah, I I I don't, I I think. It's fine to prove it as is. It just seems to. It just seemed a little confusing. Uh.
Yeah.
Because I I think especially for an annual report, we wouldn't go into. That kind of detail about litigation unless something actually. Happened uh. Terms of going to executive session, but just. But when we sent the letter to the A G, it was really in support of the bylaws, so I just sort of confused the reader, but. If if you want us. I mean, if you wanted. I'm I'm fine with approving as is. You want to approve it tonight? That's good.
I mean, do you think you want to just uh? I mean, I agree that, you know, the letter to the Attorney General is more about the bylaw. I mean, that's, you know. It it may be like, you know, related to the case, but it's primarily about the bylaw. Um, should I just take out the stuff about executive session? Does that need to be in there at all?
Uh, if you're asking me, I would say no, but uh. It doesn't hurt. I don't, you know, for the benefit of.
So let me, let me just share my screen so we can. Hey, I know we gotta get uh. And uh. Can folks see my screen here?
Not yet. There we go.
No, probably need to.
Want me to do it?
No, I'm sorry, I just.
Oh, I can't.
I figured it would be easier to see if I had just the one page, but then, you know, the Zoom sharing stuff covers up all your your headings up there, so. And so if I uh. Get rid of this. Put it here. And then, you know, the only kind of thing here is this with this this one part here about the going into executive session. I could stick it under. You know. Other uh additional activities. Right at the end here. Because I I just feel like this 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 sentence here just doesn't go under the uh. The paragraph with the. Um, by law amendment. I guess maybe it does because it's related to a lawsuit on a by law amendment. Is that your thinking?
No, I think you put it in the bullet section is fine.
Okay. I don't mean to belabor it, I just. I'm a perfectionist with this kind of thing, so.
I predict this year's annual meeting booklet will be a best seller.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, yeah, I think we can just, that's it, uh. So can I hear a a motion uh to to approve as a? Yeah, can I can I hear a motion to approve this with uh the others we just done?
I'll move to approve the shoots for a planning board annual report for fiscal year two thousand twenty three.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it if nobody else wants to.
I appreciate that, Steve. Uh, any discussion? Okay. Let's stop the share. All right, I'm gonna call the roll. Pike Croft?
Aye.
Bonner?
Aye.
Wrestler?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
Weston?
Aye.
Big Kara?
Aye.
And I'm an I. And the motion passes. We've got an annual report. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Now, uh. Now I believe we get to the fun part.
Uh, Nathan, you're coming around.
And we're only ten minutes behind uh the schedule.
Can it get more exciting than this? I'm not sure.
I don't know, I don't know. Okay, um. So we have uh. Review potential by law amendments for annual town meeting, uh, solar, dark skies, uh, de minimis changes to special permit decisions. And, you know, anything else? Uh, we might want to consider, um. So. Michael, would you like to go first?
Sure.
Uh, with uh solar or?
I'll 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 put it out there, then we can figure it out. So there's there's the four, um, just for background, um. We did months ago talk about. Looking at a. A lighting bylaw because we didn't address it last. Last year, and so I wrote it up and sent it out, but we never discussed it. So that's sort of. One thing, and I I've made. Changes since the the last version. Um, the de minimis came up in the conversation following the lighting, um. Special permit. And Jeff. Lacy, I think initially had said. We should really look at if something is truly de minimis, do we want to have? People resubmit everything currently the way the. The bylaws. The zoning bylaw works is that. If an amendment is made to a special permit, it has to go through the same process. As the original special permit. Um, and I think in the case of White uh, Whiteman, it was like we were moving something afoot. So I wrote something up. We've never discussed it. We really should just sort of. Uh, it's not. Long and complex, but it's worth discussion. And then. In terms of the solar and the energy, what I wrote in the email to everybody, which is to say it out loud is. I sort of want. I've I've worked on a revision following a conversation with Donna and Jeff Lacy. I've Jeff and I agreed to share. Uh. Documents, so he's looked at the solar one. I haven't got feedback on the energy storage. I can give you a sense of it, but I'm sort of hesitant. For this meeting to go much. Into it. I wanted to talk to Donna, get her feedback on what was written. Make any changes and then send it to you all, so we could talk about it in February. It seemed like a more productive conversation than. To share something that Donna hasn't seen yet. Um. And I almost got to talk to her on Friday, but then she had an emergency with some other talent, so. Uh, she had to cancel my meeting. Uh, so having said that, I guess I'll leave it up to you all. Do you want to? There's the de minimis, there's the lighting we can discuss. If you want to talk about the substance of the solar and the energy, I'm happy to share what I've. Been thinking, even if I haven't shared it writing yet.
Why don't you do de minimis first because that's easy?
Yeah, it's it's definitely easier. So, hey, Carrie, is there a reason I couldn't share my screen before?
Yeah, because I have to make people individually a co-host, so at the time you were a co-host and now you are.
Oh, thank you. I'm I'm feeling the power course through the cyberspace. It's where is my share? There it is, okay, uh. So I'll make it bigger. So. The first paragraph is what in black is what currently is. Um, and it says. Special permit site plan may be amended in the same manner as reported. Special permit site plan may be amended in the same manner as required, it's the issuance of original approvals, that's what's there now. I just, in the yellow highlight is sort of the stuff that I think pops, so. What I was suggesting is that. An amendment to a special permit or site plan could be exempted. From three things, either additional filing fees. A public hearing. Or the refiling of unchanged documents, so all things that are sort of. Maybe. A burden or duplicative, uh, to the applicant. If the special permit granting authority, uh. By a two-thirds vote agrees that something is de minimis, then I sort of to. Define de minimis that I got from a couple of zoning documents, so. Minimal or minor deviations that are not substantially alter the intent of the original permit. And then for process, I said that. It would have to be submitted in the same manner as required by the special permit of site plan, the last seven days. For the meeting, so that we would actually have some time to look at it. Uh, and then I guess one thing that. Would be helpful to discuss is. It seemed, what I wrote is an objection from a butter prior to the exemption vote. Either in a writer or in a public hearing would negate the option for an exemption. So if someone wanted us to have the whole process be fully done again. Uh, and they were in a butter that they could ask us not to give the exemption and. Do the whole process. Um, so. That's all my thing, you know, the two-thirds is a higher bar than just a majority. That we're not saying it's exempt from everything, just a couple of specific things. Uh. And that. The request would have to be in the same manner as originally. Uh, you know, so it'd have to get delivered to the. The town court, for example. Original would have to be the exemption, so what do you all think? And I can make it a little bigger, helpful.
Michael, just to clarify, this, uh, version that you have with the, uh. Yellow highlighting. Is, uh.
It's what I said.
You did, it's the one you sent me, but you did the highlighting after it.
Yeah, I did, I did the highlight about ten minutes ago when we were talking, I was like, oh, I should make this clear.
Actually, there's a hand up.
So I'm just curious, the origin of this, like, why? Why are you, why is this being proposed now?
Well, when we did the Whitman special permit, the one on Levert Road. We were, you know, went through a couple of meetings and there was a whole discussion about. The driveway between the two existing houses in relation to a tree and the stone walls. And so. We came up, we approved a special permit. With. Specifications that required. That the applicant go to the ZBA to get an exemption on their part. And the ZBA came back and said. Well, you need to tweak it just a little bit. Which means that it came back to us. And therefore it was an amended special permit and literally removing. The road afoot. So everything else was defined, so the question was. If we're moving it afoot, does, does the applicant have to pay another fee? Do they have to send in all those documents that we already have, nothing's changed? Uh, and do we have to have a public hearing for? Uh, and so Jeff raised the question. Are. These things for something such so little, do we, can we exempt them? And we didn't have anything in there. So that was why.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah, that was a, that was a doozy, um. I don't know who had their hand up first, but I guess I'll just go, uh, Steve first and then Deacon.
So I, uh, Michael, I think this is a, a, a very useful, um. Addition, it'll streamline the process quite a bit. My only question is that last sentence that you highlighted. If two-thirds, if we get a two-thirds vote. That determines that the changes are de minimis. Why are you offering this opportunity? For an objection to kick the whole process back in?
Um, I'm not attached to it, I really thought it was a discussion point, I, you know, I, I had the exact same thought that if we as the board and our learned. Uh. Understanding of the issue, decide that, you know. It's de minimis, then it could be de minimis. I just, I was thinking, well, you know. Uh, someone could. On a butter can have a strong feeling and say, oh, you know. They're just trying to rebrand this through, even if it's. Like, we're claiming it's de minimis, but it's not really de minimis. Um, so I, it's a balance, I, I can go either way, it really was a discussion point. Uh. So it's sort of a counterbalance.
Yeah, I would, I would think if. Those informed. Determined that it's de minimis. That should carry the weight it needs to carry, somebody can, can file an objection that's spurious, quite frankly, and kick the whole process in again. So. I would be in favor of eliminating that last sentence, everything else looks good to me. Cool.
Thank you, Steve, uh, for that feedback, I, uh. I, I agree, I, I, I don't think that we should, but before, yeah, I think, uh. Yeah, I would like to certainly make room for. You know. Considering any feedback we receive from, from a butters or, or stakeholders, but, uh, yeah, to. To put it in, um, that, you know, if we receive any objections that we just, you know, making a new special permit, I think is, uh. You know, it, it, it puts us in a, a tight spot. Um, but it is, I think, worth, uh. Maybe saying, you know, before I go on too much, uh, Deacon, you want to say something?
Um, I, I just wanted to say that, um. This doesn't say anything about, um. Filing with the registry of deeds, um. After the planning board has made a decision, I mean, does. It just seems like that, that process, that part of the process is left out. I mean, because they're gonna have to file with the registry of deeds to change.
Right, yeah, I think that, I would, that's what I would assume, that whatever's final. Has to go to them, like, we can't, we can't take that requirement off, so maybe it's just clarify, it's clarifying additional filing. Uh. To the planning board.
Well, no, I'm just saying, it doesn't make mention of, of making a filing, of the, of the applicant making a filing later with the. With the registry of deeds, I mean, because. That de minimis change is gonna have, is gonna be just as, uh, much ineffective as the original. As the original special permit.
So it's the final approved documents, right?
Yeah, I mean, somehow, they've got to be filed later.
How's that?
Um, I, I think that's a good start, I don't know if it's more complicated than that or not, but, uh, I mean, I just think it ought to be in there, that's.
Okay.
There's the, uh. This, this decision that we write, uh, filed on the deeds, or is it just the plans that are part of the submission? That show the lot and everything like that.
Well, I, I'm just saying that whatever change gets made. Has to be memorialized at the registry of deeds, that's, that, that's the only point I'm trying to make.
No, I understand, I, I'm just trying to kind of clarify, um. You know, what the implications of that are, uh, Carrie?
So when I receive, because I, I receive a copy afterwards of them confirming that they have filed with registry of deeds. And usually it's just the written decision that, um. Is filed. Uh, I know that it's also required of them to, if they have large, I mean, almost all of them have large. Um, site plans attached to them, I know the accessors get, I think, two copies, we keep copies. I'm not entirely sure if the site plans themselves, though, are also included in the registry of deeds, I've never. Seen that in the copy I receive, if that's helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
How's that?
Yeah, um. I, I'm sure Donna will have something to say about it. I mean, I would go with whatever she says.
Okay.
Well, is that language not already in the bylaw somewhere? As part of just the regular process? I just looked for registry and I see it only one time as a, uh. Looks like it's part of open space design, it says, uh. You know, Article, uh, five, section three dash four. Density transfer, transfer of development rights, and it's, you know, non, then. Uh, part, uh, A seven, uh, is a condition of approval of the density transfer, conservation restriction. On the sending parcels. Satisfying the requirements of section five point six. Shall be executed and recorded in the registry of deeds. So that's regarding a conservation restriction. For the, uh.
Maybe this is just. The, the ordinary.
Probably covered by state statute.
They just not have been mentioned, and. I. Um, I was just concerned that, that. The ordinary requirements to go to the registry still obtain. You know, even for the de minimis changes.
No, I mean, I, I think it's a fine point for sure.
How about as a next step? If. Whenever we decide on the, the next few things, I, I'll send stuff to Donna for her review. And then based on that, come back and decide if we want to. You know. Move this forward to eventual public hearing.
She may not like the whole idea for all we know.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to go too far wordsmithing, I mean, I. I wanted to get the concepts and see if you all. Were okay with these concepts, um, now I could send it to her, it sounds like. If we make the change that Steve suggested, the one Deacon suggested, I don't see any other. Uh. Comments that would preclude me from sending it to her for review. Is that reasonable?
Yeah, yeah, um, but I was just gonna, uh. Say, you know, I, I like the idea of, uh, kind of. You know, facilitating, um. Uh, public feedback in that, uh. So, um.
You want to put in a proactive statement in terms of. You know, the, the public will be input on the, the status of de minimis. De minimis. Uh, isn't. I mean, they could always speak to it as public comment. The other thing to do is you can, we can keep, we can take out the public hearing and just take away the additional fee and the refiling, and still have a public hearing, which. Then formalizes public comment.
That's true, um.
The problem with the public hearing is then they have, you know, there's a cost of. Putting it to paper and all that kind of stuff, which it's not unreasonable. If you want to have public engagement, but if we're trying to simplify.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I don't think that. I want to take out the public hearing part, I was, I was also just kind of like trying to zip through it again, because. I recall last time. We talked about this, there was, you know, one, you were kind of talking about having two votes, one to say, is it de minimis and two, like, do we want to approve it?
Yeah, this is simpler.
This, so this just says, uh, basically with one vote, you say, yes, it's de minimis and we approve it. Okay. Um.
Yeah, I mean, do what, we can float the other. The two vote idea for everybody now. Uh. That was my original thought, is you vote if it's de minimis or not, and if it is de minimis. Then you could go to approve it, uh. This is, this is, all, all this is focused on now is that the amendment. Uh, is determined to be de minimis, so it doesn't have to do the other stuff, it doesn't address approval or anything, it still has to be approved. This is, this is not. Doing this process, Nathan, doesn't mean that it's approved, just means that it's granted an exemption.
Okay, then what is there, do we need to have language that, uh, determines that approval?
No, because that's the regular special permit. Decision. It's still a special permit, it's just an amended special permit. And the question is, does it come as an amendment with all the baggage of everything that is required? Or is it sort of streamlined?
Oh, okay, alright, I'm kind of, uh. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Um. Alright, so I, I, I think, I think I understand the way to handle this then is to say, you know, if, uh. You know, if there's something along the lines of, if the board, you know, if the board, uh. Affirms, you know, by the two-thirds vote that the changes are, are de minimis, then. You know, the, uh. The new special permit decision will. You know, include in its findings, you know, why the board. Thinks it's de minimis, which provisions of this section are exempted, whether it's the public hearing only, or, you know, the refiling of unchanged. Uh, unchanged documents only, um. Or the, you know, and, you know, whatever, uh, parts are exempted. And, uh. You know, and additionally, uh, uh, address any. Public comments that are received relative here to something along those lines, right? So that, that way it just kind of like circles it back to that, uh. You know, other section and, uh. And ties it in that way. Carrie, are you just trying to speak again?
Yeah, um, I kind of just, I guess have like a question, so. If this. So the board would determine. Whether additional filing fee, the public hearing part would be required or not. Right, okay.
Correct.
Um, I will say, though, if the additional filing fee isn't required, but a public hearing is. Um, the just, like, I know that they had discussed, um, it is being kind of burdensome on. Um, placing an ad for like public hearings, but if there isn't a filing fee, then the burden of cost for the public hearing would then fall on. The planning board. I believe.
That's true.
So I thought I would bring that up.
No, no, that's, uh, that's a good point, you know, I mean, and, uh, there may be, uh. Situations where we feel that due to, uh, an error on the board's part or the town's part that, uh. Um. Yeah, I, I don't know, uh, I, I don't know why we would ever say, oh, you know, we're gonna pick up the tab for a public hearing, but we might.
Nathan, does this bottom part capture what you were just saying?
And then I would also add just, uh. As well as, uh. Including response to any comments received, uh. Relative to the changes, and any public comments received relative to the changes. Possibly at the end, because it seems like the, that, uh. Well, I mean, it doesn't really matter, but I, I like it either probably after the. Yeah, at the end. And then get rid of the and before, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that, I like that.
Cool. Okay. So.
Oh, is this, I'm sorry, say, uh, and, um, you know, address, uh. Any, um. And address any comments. So it just kind of says, and any comments relative to changes, but like, and, and address any comments, uh. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Even if it's just an acknowledgement, it's like, yeah, we received it, you know, we, we still think it's de minimis, I don't know.
He's got a question.
Go ahead, Nathan, I'm sorry.
No, I, I, I'm. I'm done.
So never having gone through one of these, um. I guess, would, would it be worth, what would be some examples? Not only for my clarification, but for. For the public and for future planning board members. Uh, once we're all gone, uh, of a de minimis. Alteration.
Well, there's the one you didn't live through, which is the Whitman one, um. I can, so. Thinking about like. Wheelock, for example. You know, it got approved and there's the fencing requirement that it be. You know, it got approved and there's the fencing requirement that it be a darker black. Perimeter fence, so you know, it doesn't. Just say they were doing it during the pandemic and they had a supply chain thing. They said we could only get gray. Can we do it with gray? Uh. So they would, we at that point would say, well, it got approved with black. That was a condition of the special permit. Uh, if we're going to prove gray, that's a, that's an amendment to the special permit. So. Currently, what they would have to do is they'd have to go through the whole thing, so they'd have to pay an additional fee, they'd have to have a public hearing, and then have to send us all the slew of documents. Uh, and then we would, after the public hearing and reviewing that stuff, say, yes, you can do gray. So. Um, if they say we can only get neon orange, maybe we decide that's not de minimis, that's actually significant. Uh, so that's like an example, I think.
All right, I mean, that's a, that's a good example. I think that makes perfect sense. Um. And I guess, again, me being new to this. Maybe all you planning board veterans. Have a better mind's eye view of of. What kind of odd things might come. Bubbling up.
I think it's.
Man, I I'm a little bit concerned with this, um. You know, on the one hand, I I love the idea of uh. You know, I I did not like the way things, you know, went with with Whitman, right? Because it was. You know. A real bummer for him to have to go through another special permit to widen the driveway by one foot. You know, and it's, uh, it was unfortunate that we weren't able to accommodate that without going through another special permit, you know, it's like a. It's a substantial expense. Um, so, you know, what we're trying to do is to address that. But on the other hand, um. You know, I think that this has the potential to get sticky. So, you know, I just think, um. You know, it's got to be, uh, you know, the. The board is, is, if their, if their wives will. Um, use this section of the bylaw. Uh, very sparingly and 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 very cautiously. Uh, and not, uh. And and certainly not, uh. Without careful thought, um, because, you know, if you do, and then that's, uh. And and I mean, obviously, we got to see what legal review says. I mean, it may not be that big a deal, but it's, it's, uh. You know, um. You know, if if the special permit had been a, you know, a contentious one, then uh. It it it, there could be. You know, a portion of the public that would uh. Not be willing to entertain. The idea that any changes are de minimis. Uh, so, you know, I don't know how that would play out if. You know, and uh. Down the road, but that's why we have, are going to have Donna take a close look at it and. You know, either not do it or or. Or make changes according to to any feedback she gives that she has concerns about it. Um. Ashley.
Um, just. Quick thought, I. I feel I have a little bit of personal experience with this because I. I am a very close abutter to a property uh that has an access road. Which. Would need to be used if development was going to happen. And so I'm thinking about. The Whitman situation and the tree and the one foot and. While it may be insignificant and. Annoying to have to go through the whole special, you know, we all were there, so it was. Challenging situation. As in a butter, you know, with uh these trees like we just. And the one foot, it could be significant to me and I. I would perhaps want to be um guaranteed that I'd be able to have a discussion before. An amendment to a special permit was made. And I'm wondering if there's a gray area, if there's. And there probably isn't because I'm, I think I'm learning that town government is very black and white, but. Um. Where there, where it's not necessarily like a public hearing, but just a guarantee that. Abutters or whatever, like concerned parties are able to. To be there and to just be aware of what's going on. Is that possible?
Well, it gets to the sense that I just, I'm. Struck through that Steve had suggested we get rid of, so I don't know. Like, in in your concern. You would be, you would have the ability as an abutter, not like anybody in the community, but an abutter to say. I don't, I don't, I want the full deal. I don't want a streamlined process. So that that was my thinking originally. I mean, I think your your point and Steve's point are both legitimate, it's a matter of where we we land on the issue.
So can I, let me just respond to that because my feeling is, and the Whitman case is a good example. Everybody was on board with agreeing to this small change, but our hands were tied. By this paragraph that Michael has in black. We all had to go through the process again, even though everyone acknowledged. It was a minor change, it really didn't have any impact. In that same public meeting, in 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 your case, Ashley, if you, if you had a real. Objection or concern, then with the planning board would be discussing it and.
Right.
Not just treating it, not dismissing your concern as a but in a butter. So I, I think we're covered, guys. I think we're making a. We're making a mountain out of a molehill here. We have a public process that objections, if they're. Out in the open. And we're, and the planning board is going to be fair and objective. And there's enough of an objection for a small, what we, what some think might be a small change. That's where the two thirds vote comes in. If it doesn't, it won't pass muster.
Right. Um, one thing I think is that we should get this to Donna very quickly. I mean, to find out if this is even the right approach. I mean, there may be, there may be some sort of standardized. Approach to dealing with with de minimis changes. That aren't the way. We're even conceiving of it, you know, I mean, I, I think we should get her advice as soon as possible before we spend a lot more time.
Yeah.
That's a good point, um.
I can, I. If the board's good with it after we talk about it, I could send it tomorrow, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I I I was just gonna. You know, I don't know if there's really a place to put it in the bylaw, but uh, just. You know, my thinking is that as a best practice, you know, what we can and and should do is. Attempt to write conditions that. You know, are going to achieve what we want to achieve, but that. Maybe, uh. Basically kind of provide some provisions that are, you know. Kind of outs, if you will, like, you know, with your supply chain example, you know, I don't know if that's really. That's hard to do. Um. Because you can't think of everything that's going to happen and you don't want to make it too wide, so they can just say, oh, it didn't work, we want to, we just went with the neon orange fence, sorry. You know what I mean? But, uh, you know, to try and write, write conditions that don't box it in too much and make it too rigid, so that, you know, something unexpected comes up and. Now you have to go through the whole process again. Um. But, uh, anyway, that's.
Nathan, I I agree with that, um. Um, Deacon, let's get it to Donna and see. If this has merit.
I agree. All right, that's, that's good. Anyone else have anything before we move on to the next?
Hey, I I just wanted to add, I agree with Steve. I think at some point. The members of the planning board as the people's representatives, you got to trust that they're going to use good judgment in these things, and if the butter has a concern. That the the people on the planning board will take that into account. And I, as Nathan said, you can anticipate every possible. Scenario.
Thank you. All right, Michael, I think that's, uh.
Hey, that's a wrap for that one. Yeah.
Hey, Michael, that was a simple one.
I know. Uh, let's see. Well, it just goes, just reaffirms that. Talking in any depth about the solar, the energy storage won't. Doesn't make sense. So. This. Is a, up, it's actually, I updated it. This week, but it's an updated version of something that got sent out a few. Months ago, um, just for backstory. Uh, I think mostly for Keith, but, uh. Two town meetings ago, uh, right before town meeting. A resident had asked. Come to us and ask about zoning bylaw for lighting. And it was too close to town meeting, we couldn't write it. They ended up doing the citizen petition. Uh, part of the petition was asking the planning board to come up with a lighting bylaw. At the town meeting, it got, um, pulled back, so the town never voted on it. Uh, but we did have conversation. About it to some degree at that point, and then subsequent to that, last year we decided not to go forward. Uh. I don't think there's consensus on. Whether we should have a zoning, lighting zoning bylaw or not, there's definitely mixed opinion. Uh. But I thought. We should at least have something to discuss, so. I just, I don't know if everyone got through it, I'll just run it through really quickly. There's. The purpose.
Just have one thing, Michael?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
So, um, with this. Annual report thing, I uh, I pulled up one that was, you know, the town report, uh, when the last one I think was. From two years ago, and I had that bylaw question on there. And what I didn't realize is that it was split into two. Parts, which the first part was, well, one part was the bylaw, which was voted down, and the other part was. Actually directing the planning board to take up. Creating a crafting of lighting zoning bylaw and uh. And bringing it to town meeting, preferably last year. So, uh, we actually received direction from town meeting to make a bylaw, which I did not. I just didn't realize that that was actually what the vote did. Um, so, uh, you know, just to kind of put a little bit more clarification on that backstory.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. I sort of remembered, I didn't remember it fully, but I. You just sharpened my memory. So, just a quick drive through and then if people have thoughts. Um, there's just the purpose section. Uh, and, you know, in a bigger context, there's the whole movement of the dark sky movement. Uh, Northampton just had a whole bunch of stuff in the paper the last month or two about it. Um, so there's, there's examples out there, uh, within Massachusetts, so. I tried to be. Less expansive in this than the norm, I think, you know, given that. People have different opinions, you can be very broad in terms of protections, you can be really narrow, I try, go and try and find some middle ground. So there's the purpose, which we can get back to. Some definitions that are helpful, just because these are not things that we're necessarily used to. Uh. Then really the substance is. This control of lighting, so how one can control, um, lighting in town. And then. Uh, there's a couple of things in here about things that are exempt. For example, everyone has to have exemptions for holiday lighting, uh, as an example. Um. Nathan, when I was. Telling about this, expressed interest in streetlights, so I tried to put something in about streetlights. Uh, and then. These are actually carryovers from. Other stuff in our bylaw, um, I believe, but it's, they're pretty universally prohibited. And then. We've, we've had prior conversation about enforcement of different things. I think it came up with signage. Uh, and then notably the effective date. Um, I thought if this is. Town meeting date, so we could grandfather people in. Uh, who don't. Aren't compliant, um, so. I can jump in anywhere that people want to or. However you want to proceed.
So I looked at it earlier today and. Um, you know, I think this is just my inexperience, the effective date thing, like I'm thinking about if my neighbor had this super obnoxious light that was like shining in my bedroom window. Three hundred and sixty-five days a year, but they installed it before April of twenty twenty-four. There's nothing that can be done.
Well, the effective dated. The effective dated is. And is something we could put in or not put it. Um.
Okay.
So.
I wasn't sure if that was just legally how this goes with this kind of stuff. I mean, it could. Like, maybe not all of it could be. Effective date. Prior to town meeting, maybe just like the obnoxious light shining in my bedroom window part, you know, if.
I think we'll put that in. I mean, the only example that I have, maybe, maybe Deacon and Steve know better, but. You know, normally it's, it's effective as of the date of the town meeting vote, but if you, if you remember the, the original. Solar bylaw on two thousand sixteen. It was getting approved. Before the special permit for Wheelock. Was approved, and so there's a carve out. Which basically said. From this date forward, this is the solar bylaw. But. For this particular special permit in this particular spot, it's exempt. So. I don't know beyond that how much of a carve out you can do. Uh. We can probably do a carve out for obnoxious lighting. Uh, and see how that goes.
Because that was where this came from, right? There was a woman who came before the board. Who was having some issues with lighting on her property, if I remember right.
Yeah, it was the, it was, was the. The house just up the hill from the fire department that was newly built, so there was a lot of construction.
Right.
Well, I mean, you know. I think that the. You know, the, the question is still kind of like, all right, you know, if you have. You know, when you enact a, a zoning bylaw. You know, the uses that are existing are are somewhat maintained, um. You know, if there's a, uh, a gravel pit in town, and then we make the bylaw that says no more gravel pits are allowed in town, it's a prohibited use. The gravel pit that's already in use is, you know, it doesn't mean that they have to cease uh operation and shut their. Their gravel pit down, uh, it's it's protected because it's in use before we enact that bylaw. Um. But I don't know that that's, uh. It's as simple as that with with everything, you know, I mean, it's, uh. But I mean, I do think that there is some, um, you know, consideration for that, that there is, you know, only. You know, for the most part, that it's going to be applicable for. You know, new permits that are issued. Or 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 changes of uses or new uses, right?
Did you wait for me or?
Yeah, I'm. Yeah, I actually, uh.
I have a question for Michael. In your research and pulling this, um, bylaw together, Michael, did you see any reference to? Grandfathering in, uh, you know, egregious violators of this, or was there any reference to time?
No, you know, the previous conversation about time. Jeff Lacy had raised, which is he originally said this should be a. Um. General ordinance where, um. There is, so if it's a general ordinance, it can go, it it's just, it affects going backwards, so it's directly actively affected. Uh. So he was suggesting that maybe that be the case. Uh, if we do zoning, then it's at the point in time, but I didn't see anything. I can look. Uh. And get a sense, but. This was. I put this in mostly to the, to the point that. You know, Nathan was thinking about that some people would feel like. You know. It seems to me. This is a. An issue that people could get. Uh, prickly about, and so, I I've had my lights for twenty-five years, and this is how they are, and now you're making me change them. So, I was, I was trying to address that so that people felt like. If we did go forward with it and it did get considered that. People would be forced to change. I mean, there is the issue of. Uh. You know, I think to Ash's point. There's. Uh. I would say it's a bully pulpit, but if we, if we approve this, and basically the purpose of the intent was to minimize it, you can go to your neighbor and say, hey. This is, this is what the town approved. Can you give me a break and try to do something different? I mean, right now, there's no fallback. It doesn't say anything about expectations at town. So. But it's, I, I love.
Well, I certainly think by keeping it in. The likelihood of it passing will be much greater. Keeping this data that you have. If you make it a general ordinance, I think there will be some resistance for some of the reasons you just mentioned. Um. And 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 Ashley, there's always BB guns, keep in mind. They're very effective.
I got a couple. I got a couple of changes in E.
Okay.
In the first line, um. Uh. Illumination levels. Do not to, that to needs to go.
Hmm.
Look at this, Deacon, boo.
Okay, and then on the next to last line. Um. The sentence at the end, I'm thinking you might want shall instead of should.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Like they are.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Robert.
I, I guess I appreciate all the work you've done on this, Michael, but I my feeling about it, as I, I think I voiced some time ago, is I think it's too much for a small town to have a, have this type of ordinance. One, if you don't include what's presently in existent, existence, it affects a very small sector of the public. And two, if you have it a general ordinance where it can affect any light, lighting in town, I think the I, I guess I would, would guess along with Steve that the likelihood of its passing is greatly decreased. It's greatly decreased because people don't want that type of intrusion. And there's something to be said, although I know our history has been challenged, but there's something to be said in a small town that a mediation process, a discussion process is an able substitute to trying to regulate so, so in such detail. So I, that's just where my heart is, and I guess my mind is, my mind follows.
Yeah. Just to clarify, I don't think it should be a general ordinance. I think a zoning ordinance is probably more effective, just in terms of tolerability. Sorry, Nathan.
Well, I, I was gonna say that I kind of share Robert's sentiment about you know, about this idea for the most part, you know, and, and for, I I just, you know, with between the cemetery inquiry and everything else, I, I haven't had the time to, to go through it with and kind of, you know, present like, you know, alternative ideas or whatever, but you know, to kind of you know, I don't know if I've read the most recent version of, I read a, you know, something you put out some time ago. I think what I would like to you know, I, I like the dark skies idea, you know, I do like it that, you know, you go out and, you know, there's not a lot of light pollution and you can look at the skies and I, I don't think it's a bad idea to try and and do something to preserve that. You know, that's, I think that's important, an important aspect of living in Chutesbury is that you go out and you get a good night's sky. And I think the streetlights are, are probably a big thing that we can do that people aren't really going to object to a lot to achieve that. And and I think another thing we can do is you know, is to put provisions in, you know, maybe like the zoning guideline section or the, you know, maybe some of the special permit provisions of the bylaw to basically say that, you know, the planning board or the zoning board of appeals can you know, include provisions of lighting and, and approvals. You know, that may fall short in anything that is, you know, by rider with site plan review. So there may be some kind of like you know, there may be some use for something like the, the general lighting zoning bylaw portion. But I do, yeah.
Yeah, I know Keith has his hand up. Can I just take like two minutes, Nathan? I'm just, I just want to sort of like give you like a two second, well, more than that, but just go through this. So like in terms of the ideas behind it. You know, this first provision, basically there's no strong direct light beyond your property line. So you're not shining stuff on other people's properties, sort of what the first thing's about. The second one is just that it should be intended to reduce light onto any budding parcel or reduce glare pollution. So either for pedestrians or for a budding parcel. So those two things are just the general concept of if you're gonna have light, it needs to stay on your property essentially. Whenever possible, it should be shielded or low density dimmable. So that's for the mechanics of how you would achieve that, not going beyond your property. The fourth one is just when it's dark, either keep it motion detector or light dimming possible. So the idea is sort of, if you don't have to keep your light on all night long, don't do it. The fifth one is that you need to direct the light downward or to the area. So you're not just sort of doing this floodlight, you know, which is, I think the issue that was in Levert Road. And the ninety-degree dispersion is us, that's shooting out at ninety degrees. Then the last light is just that you would minimize the height. So except for streetlights, things would not be so high that again, they sort of go. So all these six provisions are really with the idea of if you have light, contain it to your property and not have glare or the pollution beyond your property. So that's fundamentally the underlying concept. And it seems to me if that's, that's reasonable and not too particularly onerous. These other things are more like the holiday lighting, you have to put in there because it's going to come up, and that's an exemption. The low luminosity, you know, basically if you can get away with doing markers, that's better. And for businesses and exit lights and things like that. Streetlights we talked about, and then these provisions. So I, I tried to take out a lot of the stuff that was in the version of last year, just to make it less onerous. But Keith, you, your wrist is probably hurting.
So actually, I like it. I like the idea. I like, I like it a lot. My, but then I always look at it from, from who has to enforce it, who has to interpret it. And you know, some of these things are kind of subjective. One person's glare is another person's perfect reading light. And has, do we need to coordinate with the building inspector that they're good with being the enforcer of, of a lighting ordinance?
My, my gut, yeah. Well, I'm glad you like it. And I think you're right about the subjective. I, you know, I think a lot of these things fall down in terms of the enforcement, because if you try to get real enforcement, it's heavy-handed and the people doing the force, you probably don't want to do forcing. So the reality is, you know, will the building inspector come out ASAP if someone calls? I'm dubious. You know, you don't want to have the police showing up if someone's complaining about a light. So I think we have to put it in there, but I'm hoping that the fact that it's documentable to sort of to Robert's point about mediation, that someone could say, hey, this is what the intention is. We, we figured this out. I mean, I'll just say like I, I have a bathroom where in the middle of the night, when I'm doing my bathroom run, I look out the window and my neighbor's light shining in my eyes every night. And I'm like, you know, it would be really nice if that didn't happen. It doesn't kill me. I'm used to it. If I, you know, but there's another neighbor where we're shining in our bedroom and I went and talked to her, you know, and so I think there is if we lay the ground for community expectations, then there's the ability to have that first conversation. But I think enforcement is, is definitely the weak link in many of these things.
Steve.
So I, when this was Michael first proposed this a couple of years ago, I didn't see the need for, you know, we're a small town, you know, can't we work this out? Kind of like what Robert was saying. But then as I think about the future, and I don't mean, I mean, the future after if this were to be, be proposed at town meeting, April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four and forward, moving forward, new people moving into Chutesbury may come from very different places. Okay? And may have a very different idea of security and the need for lighting. And this does set a fairly good, fair baseline saying, hey, look, just be consider of your neighbor. And I agree with, with what Michael said is it's kind of the, it provides a backdrop for the mediation that Robert was talking about. So this is a long way of saying, I'm actually in favor of it, and I'm surprised because a year and a half ago I wasn't.
Yeah, I, I've also kind of come to that more, you know, like I I have concerns about it. I mean, you know, there's a problem with enforcement. You know, it's you know, I mean, I think we should do something, you know, I just, I think it should be you know, mostly focused on street lighting and any kind of non-residential use. Because I think those are going to be the sources of big lights, you know, residential stuff, you know, yeah, like, like Michael talks about with, you know, the light shining in your bedroom. Is I don't know, it can certainly be a pain and, you know, it'd be nice to be able to provide some sort of I, I don't know, like, is that something that we can do in a zoning bylaw to provide for, you know, mandated mediation if there's a, a lighting complaint or something like that? You know what I mean? So that it's like, you know, it's and, you know, again, I apologize, I haven't had a lot of time to digest this, so I'm kind of a little bit untethered in my thinking on it right now.
I could, I look, I could look into the, if anyone talks about mediation, I don't know if we're going to require it. I do think to your point, Steve's example is on target because the thing on Levert Road was exactly that, that they were, they were building. And so they had their construction stuff and they had their, you know, their big lights out there to make sure that the equipment didn't get stolen and gone broke into the house when it wasn't there. And I guess the other thing I would say, and I know Deacon's got his hand up, is I think actually thinking about the future, really the future, you know, that everything, we should continue to think about this in terms of climate migration, that people are going to be coming from other places in the next decades. And so there will be people coming from other places. And this does sort of set a community expectation of if you're going to be building or if you're going to be, you know, moving in, this is the kind of, this is what this committee is attempting to be. And maybe it will have to change over the course of time, but I think that is definitely something that will play out.
Deacon, let me interrupt you really quickly. One word I'm going to say, imagine a subdivision proposal. Okay? And we have a, a, a bylaw similar to the one Michael's drafted here. Okay, Deacon, sorry.
Oh, I, I just wanted to say, I, I don't think the building inspector is going to want, be happy at all enforcing. I think that is a lost cause.
Yeah, I, I don't know what kind of you know, on one hand, I would imagine that the building inspector would be happy to enforce whatever we put in our bylaw.
Well, I don't think so.
Yeah.
Well, the thing is, you're not going to know until things are installed. It's hard to say, or, you know, envision where the light's going to go, right? So building inspectors coming out there.
I would just point out that the building inspector on purpose doesn't carry a tape measure.
Yeah.
The building back inspector might retire somewhere.
He'd, he'd have to, he or she would have to come back at night, right? It's hard enough getting them out in the daytime, so.
Well, not to mention, you know, so, you know, the outdoor lighting that is installed prior to April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, I mean, you know, we're not requiring a permit for installing light.
How's that?
There we go. Yeah, you know, if I don't carry a tape measure, I'm also going to wear some really dark sunglasses at night.
Well, I'll look and see if there's another way to do it. I mean, I think it is. We could just take out the enforcement stuff and have no enforcement. It just seems.
No, I, I, I don't know that that's, I mean, I think the I mean, I think enforcement's fine. I, I feel like I, I need to, I just need to think about it more.
Yeah. Well, we can bring it back for sure. This is like the first discussion, so.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I do, I do want to see what we can do about streetlights. And I mean, I think it's, you know, the special permits, you know, put in a special permit so that it can be, you know, so that's explicitly listed as a, you know, that we can set these kind of limitations, right? Which would be applicable to a, well, no, I mean, it'd be applicable to open space design, not necessarily a subdivision.
And we have it, we have it built into solar and marijuana already.
Right, right. So that's, see, that's good.
Well, why don't, I'll just, I'll do some research. You guys can ponder because you all have it in your inboxes. And then next meeting is February. Can I, can I share my thinking just about scheduling, Nathan? There's a way of sort of transitioning.
Please, please, yeah.
So, so since I've been sort of writing these and thinking about them, now that we have, we know April twenty-seventh is town meeting, I was thinking in terms of a, a timing process that we would have February meeting, a regular February meeting, a regular March meeting where we can talk about these two, if we wanted to have further solar and energy storage. At the end of March, we'd have to schedule a public hearing for any and all of these to probably take place at the very beginning of April. You know, we'd send it to the select board, we scheduled the public hearing. And then we have town meeting the end of April. So my thought is, depending on where we're at, we could either do a public hearing the end of March and then have our regular meeting beginning of April. But I think we have at least two more meetings where we can talk about this stuff, knowing that we have to have a public hearing by the end of March or early April in order to get things for town meeting. So just sort of to share my thinking about how this could roll out.
Somebody said that, Michael.
It's inconvenient that it's April twenty-seventh, sort of jams us up a little bit.
Well, extra meetings are always possible.
I'm glad you said that, not me.
I don't have to worry so much anymore.
He can speak from a lot of experience.
Yeah. You know, before we move on, I just, I just briefly tell you this, this gist of the solar and the energy storage. So, you know, from things that I think Donna's conveyed, both to us as a group and then to Jeff and I, is taking, changing some things that restrict, you know, one of the issues of trace the lane that the attorney general picked up on as well was the limitation of where you can put things. So Trace Lane said, you know, two percent of the land in municipalities insufficient. They didn't say what the top level is, but things that constrain. And so I went through and tried to figure out things that may be constrained, but also maintain the intent. So I've gone through and done that, run it by Jeff. He seems to agree with me. So I want to get through Donna, but that's sort of the gist where many of the things that we put in there, the conditions and protections and regulations have nothing to do with where, you know, the amount of land to get put on. You know, so if you think about oh goodness, slow protection to some degree or water, I mean, many, many of the stuff will stay. So I'll, you know, once I get Donna, I'll send it out mid-month. And then the one thing I we, we were going to do is because energy storage is now considered part of the solar exemption, no matter what. The idea would be to create a separate energy storage bylaw and potentially have that be a general ordinance. Because in conversations with people statewide who were actively working on this stuff, the solar exemption pertains to zoning bylaws, not to general bylaws. And so, and really constraining the energy storage to safety, you know, public health law for safety explicitly. So things that need to get conditioned. So if it's going to go in, no matter where it goes in, these are the kind of less about citing and more about mitigation. So that's sort of the, the way I've been approaching it. And as a result of that, there might be some tweaks in terms of definitions and use table. But like I said, as soon as Donna gives me the, once I send it to her and I just got permission on a Friday to get an hour for time because we're still constrained by access to legal consultation. So I just got permission on a Friday. Access to legal consultation. So I just got permission on a Friday to talk to her. So I'm going to send it to her and then have a conversation and I can send it to you all. Knowing that it's, you know, and then if. I'm hoping maybe we talk about it on February and then March again. So, that's that. And thank you all for your patience. Yes.
Yes, and Michael, thank you, you know, for the work you've done on this and. Appreciate you, you know, bearing all the. Feedback on and everything. It's, I think, yeah, we got a lot of work to do.
Hey, one quick thing, since Tom is here. Do we have a date with the select board?
No, not yet. But I do, yeah, no, I apologize, I. It is on my list of things to get that hammered down, but there's just been a lot going on with the select board lately, I think so. But I'll follow up with Becky and try and get that going. Tom, thank you for hanging in there with us tonight and for your patience through all this. I don't know, we have minutes on the agenda, but if no one objects, I'd like to hear a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just have a clarifying question. So Carrie, for September twelfth to September twenty-sixth, what's the status of those?
Wait, I I sent those, I sent those in like. A little bit ago.
I can forward you them, Michael, just to kind of put them at the top of your box inbox.
That'd be cool. Great.
Well, because I had sent them a little bit ago and then I I re-sent them out with also additional October minutes.
They're not too far buried. I read them earlier.
I think I sent them out again on Thursday, I think, when I returned back to the office.
Great, thanks. Sorry, Carrie, I missed it.
No, it's okay. It's okay. I was just concerned. I was like, well, who who would I send the email to if no one?
All right. Now back to our motion on the floor to adjourn. Raymond.
Aye.
Ressler.
Aye.
Tycroft.
Aye.
Weston.
Aye.
De Kiera.
Aye.
Did we lose Deacon? Yeah, we did. Okay, I'm an I. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, Nathan.
See you next time.